Good afternoon and welcome to the June 25th, 2025 City Council Work Session. Thank you all for joining us in this virtual meeting format. For work sessions like this one, there is no opportunity for public comment. And those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the live stream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the Public Webcasts and Meetings Materials page of the City of Eugene website. Thank you again for joining us. I now call the June 25th, 2025 Work Session of the Eugene City Council to order and turn it over to the City Manager to introduce our first topic, the Work Session on the Definition of Residential Character.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually just going to hand this to our Planning Director, Alyssa Hunter, and let her run us through this conversation.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Give me a second while I share my screen. Okay, can somebody confirm that you all see? Okay, perfect, excellent, thank you. Okay, as mentioned, today's work session is an overview on the definition of residential character. Now, at Monday's Work Session on Urban Growth Strategies, there was conversation about urban form and urban design. And I want to be clear that this is not related to that topic. This is really not about an urban design tool. It really is a more esoteric topic. And as a reminder, Council's interest in this topic surfaced during the Clear and Objective Approval Criteria for Housing Code Amendments Project in 2022. As part of those Land Use Code Amendment Adoption Process, Council passed a motion that applied the Eugene Code definition of residential character to a specific refinement plan and also passed a motion to have a further discussion about extending that codified definition to other refinement plans. So the heart of the question is whether the definition of residential character, as adopted in the city's land use code, should be applied to all refinement plans that include that term. Today, I'll provide some background on this definition and talk about the current context for housing. As I'm sure you're all aware, since the adoption of the Clear and Objective Housing Code Amendments in 2022, a lot has really changed in the housing landscape, both locally and at the state level. Okay, so just to ground us all in what is the codified definition of residential character, it's a combination of qualities and features that gives identity to a particular area where the predominant use is housing, and that distinguishes the area from other areas. This was added to Eugene's Land Use Code in 2008 through a code amendment process where proposed amendments were solicited from community members. In this particular case, the stated intent of this amendment was to mitigate impacts from incompatible infill. So because this is adopted into the land use code, the intent is that it gives meaning to words and phrases in the land use code. It's kind of like you have a book, there's a glossary, that glossary defines the terms in that particular book. So moving on to what's the application and the use of this definition, honestly, the use of it is currently fairly limited. It applies to a very limited subset of land use applications, and those are subdivisions, partitions, and site reviews, and only when the approval criteria for those land use applications require consistency with the adopted refinement plan policies that are found in the land use code, and only when those codified policies actually contain the term residential character. So you can kind of see that funneling down, so not necessarily a lot of use. In 2022, as part of the Clear and Objective Housing Code Amendments, Council extended this codified definition to apply to the West Side Neighborhood Plan. So if you go back to the glossary in a book, we're using, now we're using the glossary from one book to interpret another book, although these are kind of maybe of the same genre. So now this definition applies to, in the West Side Neighborhood Plan, it could apply to code amendments, refinement plan amendments, conditional use permits, planned unit developments, and zone changes when that policy, when a policy that uses the term residential character comes into play. So during the Clear and Objective Adoption Process, Council had questions about applying this definition to all refinement plans. And so we did scan all the refinement plans to find this term in policy language, and it appears in these five plans. I've italicized the West Side Neighborhood Plan because you've already taken action regarding that one. So also, the Council asked, what would it mean to extend the use of this code definition to these other plans? So practically speaking, it would apply to a broader set of land use applications. As I mentioned previously, for the West Side Plan, it would apply to code amendments, refinement plan amendments, conditional use permits, planned unit developments, and zone changes. And then, so the definition would now apply in the areas covered by these refinement plans and when there is a policy that they need to comply with that contains the term residential character. I know that's a lot of words and kind of wonky. And so I'm going to give you an example, but honestly, it's still a little bit wonky because I'm using these terms. So I think as an example, you could think of a code amendment related to housing. It could either be a citywide code amendment, or it could be one that was specific to one of the neighborhoods covered by these refinement plans. I'm going to use the shortest policy. I'm not picking on any particular refinement plan. I'm just picking the shortest one that you can find in Attachment A to this AIS. And so there is a policy in the West Side Neighborhood Plan that states, prevent erosion of the neighborhood's residential character. And so in looking at that policy and thinking about this theoretical code amendment related to housing, planning staff and decision makers would need to determine whether this proposed code amendment would erode the combination of qualities and features that gives identity to a particular area where the predominant use is housing, and that distinguishes the area from other areas. So you might be asking, okay, but what does that really mean? What are the impacts of this definition if we extended it broader? And so there are four main themes that I want to just speak to you about today. And the first is really, as you know, from Monday night and previous work sessions, that Eugene has an immense need for housing. Over, we need over 26,000 new homes in the next 20 years. Planning staff, community development staff, public work staff are really focused on housing actions and productions to increase the housing supply in Eugene. One concern here would that it could make it harder to address our housing need by potentially precluding changes that would allow for newer innovative housing types. It could also result in costs and delay through appeals. People like to argue about words sometimes. The second impact is really regarding outcomes. So as I mentioned, this is not a design tool. The definition is not a clear or effective tool for ensuring good urban design. Rather, it might prevent or delay housing types or developments that the community really needs and wants. And then third, related to resources and priorities, to accomplish extending this definition broader, it would require amendments to these refinement plans. And in some cases, that would require county participation in both the Planning Commission and the City Council process. So given, given staff's current focus on housing supply and production, and honestly, the massive amount of work, ambitious amount of work ahead of us, much of which is legally mandated, it's not clear how we would resource this. And then finally, something that was highlighted on Monday night are the refinement plans are aging. The five that contain the term residential character in their policies are between 33 and 43 years old, and in many cases, no longer reflect current context for housing. They're somewhat of a different era. If you think back to 1982, for anybody who was here, the landscape was really different. We had a newly adopted urban growth boundary that we shared with Springfield. We had an abundant land supply. We had a population of about 104,000, and it was actually shrinking at that time. Very different economic landscape. In terms of demographics, over half of Eugene's current population wasn't actually born yet. We had definitely lower levels of homelessness, affordability was, I'm not, I don't even know if it was mentioned. I'm sure it was, it was just of a different level. Many of the policies in these plans, or some of the policies in these plans, don't reflect our current housing needs or the natural evolution of neighborhoods. I realize this is a big question for another day, but at some point, we will need to discuss what to do with these plans, given their static nature in our ever-changing landscape, and that in some cases, as mentioned Monday night, they can be a barrier to housing production and supply. So I'm going to leave it at that, and that concludes my presentation, and I look forward to your questions and discussion.
Thank you for that presentation. I will now open the Florida Council Discussion, and Councilor Gross for Synecy.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alyssa, for the presentation. I'm still a little bit confused. We're talking about erosion of neighborhood quality. Many in our community would say House Bill 2001 and C-FEC are doing just that. So how do we, how do we bring those two together in a cogent manner that makes sense and still stays within the requirements of the law?
I don't think this definition is going to help you get where you want to go with that or where maybe the community wants to go with that. With, you know, with middle housing, I think we're seeing, we're seeing both sides of that. We're seeing a fair amount of middle housing being built and being developed, which is, you know, providing to, providing housing supply and production and ownership opportunities. We are really limited by the state there in terms of what we could add for design standards or development standards. A lot of that was dictated to us, honestly, by, by state law. And so in that case, there was not, not a ton that we could do. And this definite, adding this definition broader is not something that was going to help with that. I know there are concerns, and I hear them and I understand them about character or urban design in general. And again, adding a definition to these refinement plans is not going to help bring buildings up to the street. It's not going to help widen our sidewalks. So if it's really specific design elements that folks are interested in looking at, this is not the tool that we would want to use to get us there.
I can appreciate that. I'm thinking also about off-street parking requirements that are gone by the wayside. Basically, what I'm looking for is, what is a reasonable response when somebody asks that question, where we don't sound like a bunch of idiots?
Which question exactly?
Neighborhood quality.
Neighborhood quality. I mean, I think that is through the land use, there's, I mean, there are a number of ways. And I think it depends on what you mean by neighborhood quality. If you're talking about sidewalk widths, we have street design standards. If we're talking about street trees, or are you talking about how the buildings interface with the street? Are you talking about density? I mean, there are a number of different tools to get at it. So it kind of, you know, I hate to use this planner answer, but it depends. It depends what we're talking about. I can tell you, in all of those cases, adding this definition isn't going to address those things. Those are more looking, let's look at our development standards. Let's look at, you know, street design standards and, you know, projects that are working on the street. Those are places that the tools make more sense to address those things.
I'm not sure that's going to satisfy some parts of our community. And that's what I'm, I'm looking for, a cogent response that I can give them. I mean, just even taking the narrow scope of off-street parking, married with skinnier streets that only allow parking on one side of the street. It just seems like we've got a lot of things that are working contrary to each other and some of the goals and objectives that we've set as a council, but also has been, you know, foisted upon us by changes in state law. And I don't know that there is, is a response that's going to make sense, but it's always frustrating to me when I try to explain something and I can just see people getting more and more confused. And I think that's what's going to happen here. So I'm not, I don't think there is a silver bullet for this, but at the same time, I think it's something we have to be aware of, and we have to figure out some speaking points that we can use that make sense to the average person. Thank you.
Counselor Kaczynski.
Yes, so I've, I'm pretty familiar with this policy and the refinement plans in question and how this language has been used in past Land Use Port of Appeals appeals. I feel like this, this language is very subjective. It really is how someone would define the unique qualities that, that make a neighborhood unique is very different for very people within that neighborhood. And I know for a fact that some of the arguments that have been put forward as to what makes my neighborhood unique are the polar opposite of what I think makes my neighborhood unique. And I know that the intent, you said at the very beginning, that the intent of this was to prevent incompatible infill, which, again, what is compatible and incompatible is different for different people. And so I see this policy and this attempt to broaden this definition to more areas of the city as an explicit attempt to put in place barriers to housing. Like, that is the intent of this, is to put in place barriers to housing in our neighborhoods. And I'm not in favor of that. I think we need to be working very hard to remove barriers. So I would not be in favor of expanding the use of this definition, nor am I particularly pleased that it applies in the neighborhood that it does apply in. Because, again, I think it's a, it's an attempt to place barriers to housing in particular neighborhoods that other neighborhoods wouldn't have to, to deal with. So, thanks.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say first, I agree with my colleague, Randy, that we do have quite a problem with what the state has foisted upon us, but I don't think that's going to substantively change and the state's expectation of how we're all going to live together until such a time as the majority of minds change in Salem, and I don't anticipate that soon. So I wouldn't anticipate we will see much difference anytime soon. My question is for Alyssa. I thought Counselor Kaczynski's point was interesting. And my question for you is, how will including this in other refinement plans in other areas of, including this definition, alter in any way the work that Planning Commission does or the outcomes that, that are put forward by them?
It could be, I mean, I can't say definitively it will do X or it will do Y. I can tell you what our concerns are from looking at it and looking at its past use. And that would be that it could be used as something that could prohibit or preclude new housing types or other housing actions from occurring in neighborhoods that have policies that use this language. Or it could be used as a challenge, which would delay things and, and result in appeals and more costs.
Yeah. Would it have the effect of, of protecting people's neighborhoods from incompatible sorts of development? For example, in the, in the Bethel and West part of our community, there's some incompatible uses when we put housing very close to industrial areas. Would, would this language prohibit or? Would, would this language prohibit or in any way protect from that?
So it doesn't apply in the Bethel neighborhood. That their neighborhood plan does not include any policies that have the term residential character, but it also wouldn't just apply at the time of building permit. This only applies during land use applications because it is so subjective. And it's also, I mean, it is very subjective. I think you can read it different ways, which is also part of the concern. You know, if we're looking at, you know, there are other ways to get at making sure that industrial and, and residential are not sighted together. There are other ways of preventing certain types of development to happen. I guess I'm going to be a broken record here, but this is not a great tool to prevent compatible uses or incompatible uses being next to each other if they're permitted outright. It's not a great tool to improve our urban design. And it sounds like that's a conversation folks really want to have, but this is, this is not the tool for that.
Yeah. It, it, it sounds to me like a, a subjective set of definitions that lends to having an argument in the first place. Thank you very much.
Councillor Zelenka.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Alyssa, for the presentation. I think neighborhood quality gets impacted by numerous factors. The biggest things, I think, are, are traffic, cars, delivery trucks, like UVO deliveries to the new dorms that are being proposed, things like that. Also, increase in pedestrian traffic, which creates, can create noise and litter. Parking is a big impact on, on neighborhood livability. And, and urban design, what the streets look like, what the setbacks look like, whether or not there's trees and landscaping. And then, and then finally get down to infill and how that impacts neighborhood livability and quality. And, and a lot of people think that HB two thousand and one, which allows duplexes, triplexes, quads in, in single-family neighborhoods will degrade that quality. It's kind of why I think most of the council didn't like the way that they were doing HB twenty-one and having it be a blanket instead of surgical application. But I guess using this definition, it'd be a small part of all those things that impact neighborhood quality. I guess the question for me is, so what? What if we, what if we use this definition in other places? What will happen? And you're trying to, maybe you can expound a little bit more, Alyssa, but what will happen? What, how, how will this affect housing production? Would it conflict with HB twenty, twenty, two thousand and one and other production goals? I mean, what, what's the, the, what are we going to see if we apply this? What's going to be different?
What's going to be different? Okay, I think it's, this is similar to what I believe I just responded to, but I can't give you a definitive answer in that, like, exactly something will happen or exactly something won't happen. But based on the subjective nature of it and the amount or small amount that it would apply, you know, it would generally be to a housing action, whether that's a code amendment, a refinement plan amendment, or potentially like a planned unit development. It could have the impact of either precluding certain housing types, precluding certain developments in those particular neighborhoods, depending on how the policy is, is written and how this definition kind of weaves into that interpretation of residential character. So, and then also, as I mentioned, in terms of developments in particular, it could be, you know, a reason for an appeal because of its subjective nature, and that can result in costs and delay to housing projects as well. I will note the number of the things that you mentioned, you know, regarding parking and traffic and, and all of the other things that do, you know, impact our quality of life in Eugene. Most of those don't go through this policy lens, this policy review. They're not going to go through a land use application. There are things that typically happen outside of a land use application process, meaning, again, this policy, the policies that you have the term residential character are not going to be used as a filter for those things.
Yeah, you know, it's, this is one small part of all that, all those things that impact neighborhood quality and neighborhood livability. But if we were to adopt this, and we can't adopt something that, that prohibits or contradicts HB twenty, two thousand and one. So I'm a little confused as to how that impacts, how if we used it would create the ability to stall or, or challenge different types of housing impacts? Because we can't institute a law that contradicts HB two thousand and one.
I mean, the definition already exists within the land use code. So it, it, you know, it does apply during, again, during subdivisions, partitions and site reviews. I don't know, I don't know what policies were reviewed during HB two thousand and one, the adoption process or any of that. I'm kind of looking forward at this. If we, the city comes up with, you know, a new housing type or new code amendments related to housing, that's where my brain goes in terms of, you know, that's where it could be impactful. You're right, we, we can't, we have to follow the law when it comes to the code amendments that, that implement the middle housing rules and state law.
So someone wouldn't be able to use this to say, to object to a fourplex going in next door. So that would conflict with HB two thousand and one.
Yeah, I can't, I can't think of a situation where they would, but unless I see, thankfully Lauren just popped up, so she may have a response to this as well.
The Councillors, like the short answer to your question is no, because the fourplexes are already allowed through our code. All that require, is required typically is a building permit. So no one would be looking back to these refinement plans in order to approve a fourplex at this point. It really is, we're talking about forward-looking issues. And it, the refinement plans most often come into play, as Alyssa's been saying, in light of new code amendments. So if the city council decided that you want to, as Alyssa mentioned, create a brand-new housing type that doesn't exist. We talked last night, or I'm sorry, Monday night, about the idea of micro-village housing. That's something that's new, that is not currently described in our code, doesn't really currently exist in, in many neighborhoods. If if a code amendment was placed in front of you or the Planning Commission that created this new housing type, and you will need to make findings that show consistency with applicable refinement plans. So if it allowed the new housing type in one of these refinement plans, the areas covered by one of these refinement plans, then council would have the question in front of you about whether this new housing type is consistent with the residential character policies in the refinement plan. And you'll have to interpret then what those policies mean, what the housing type is, and make a finding about whether it is or it isn't. And then, you know, someone could disagree with the way that council interpreted those policies and the action that you took, and could appeal that up to the land use port of appeals. So that, that is kind of one example about how it could come into play in the future.
So if we were to adopt this and use it more broadly, it would really apply to new regulations or other types of housing that we have, that would come into play. But it couldn't contradict HB twenty, two thousand and one.
I think that's generally, yes, an accurate statement.
Okay, thanks.
Councillor Yay.
Thanks, Mayor. So in, in November of twenty-two, I voted against this, and I would not support this now. I think this term is a relic of a time when folks were looking, many people in power were looking for ways to exclude certain housing types and certain people from their neighborhoods. And this was a tool that they used to do that, that is not something we want to currently do. And in many cases, it's not even effective. We have much better ways to do the things that we want to do in our community. And we don't need to keep these relics of a time of exclusion in our code. I would not be in favor of putting it in other places, as I was not in a favor of keeping it in the first one. So if we have specific things that we want to talk about, that we want to try to do in our community, let's do that. Let's not keep these vague, in my mind discriminatory terms in our, our land use. So let's move on and be more effective in better ways.
Councillor Koszinski, would you still like a second round? Okay. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion from council, and knowing that we have a second agenda item to get to, to say thank you, staff, for that presentation, and that this concludes our first agenda item. Heading right on into the second. I'll ask the city manager to introduce our second topic, a work session on the sidewalk program update.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Interesting timing of having this work session. Really look forward to talking about it. The interesting timing piece is, I recently had an article forwarded to me by one of the landscape architecture professors of my past, Kenny Helpan, who wrote an article on in praise of sidewalks for the Parks Foundation that it got published last week, in which he refers to it as our urban trail network, which I really love. So tonight, this afternoon, we're going to have a conversation about how to improve our urban trail network. And I believe this is going to be a combination of, looks like maybe Katie and Jody. All right.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to give Katie a moment, she's sharing her screen today. Thanks, Katie. Great, well, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jody Trendler. I'm a senior transportation planner in the Public Works Engineering Group. And I'm joined today, co-presenting with me is Katie Marwitz, the principal civil engineer. We're here today to provide updates on the city sidewalk program. We're also joined today by a big team of public works staff. So we have, I believe, Rich Choyes here with, for the Public Works Director, Jennifer Willer, city engineer, Rob Interfeld, transportation planning manager, Eric Johnson, assistant maintenance director with Public Works Maintenance, and Sean O'Brien, municipal arborist from Spin Forest Street. So I'm going to kick us off with a presentation shared with Katie, and then we'll have some time for discussion. So what are we talking about today? We're going to go try to pack a lot of information into our fifteen-minute presentation today. I'm going to briefly go over some background information and review some of our policy frameworks here in Eugene. Then Katie's going to provide some updates on our current programs and some of the new things we're working on. And then we'll end with some options for moving forward and leave plenty of time for discussion and questions. So I'd love to read that article that you mentioned, Sarah. As most of us agree, sidewalks are an essential part of our city's transportation system, and I love the idea of an urban trail network. They enable people of all ages and abilities to move safely through the city to meet their daily needs. And they're especially important for the nearly thirty percent of the population who do not or cannot drive. That includes people with disabilities, young people and seniors. And lastly, we're hearing a lot from the community right now that there's a high level of interest in sidewalks. People really want Eugene sidewalks to be safe, clean and hazard-free, and they're really looking to the city to see what we can do around that. Specifically, we've heard from a couple of groups, including curbs, which is part of the Better Eugene Springfield Transportation Advocacy Group, who I believe provided a memo to staff and council members. We've received several letters from our active transportation committee encouraging us to focus on sidewalks. And we've also had feedback and conversations with the recreational group of wheelchair users, the Wednesday Wheelers. Lastly, the city engineer sent a memo last fall to council, sort of summarizing our sidewalk programs and status and providing a few ideas for moving forward. So today's presentation, we're going to be providing updates on that content. Just a quick review for you all on our, on our policy framework. And a lot of this is also in the memo from the city engineer. But how do we get new sidewalks in Eugene? Typically, developers are responsible for providing those and building and paying for new sidewalk when a lot is developed. This was not always the case, which is why you'll often see some neighborhoods with a patchwork and some, some gaps in the network. When it fills, comes to filling those gaps, the city is currently using capital projects, and we rely on grants and bonds to fund those and fill in gaps in the network. And previously, under the nineteen ninety-three sidewalk program shown here, the city ran a five-year pilot to assess property owners and have them contribute funds to pay for sidewalk infill on streets without sidewalks in sort of some priority areas. And that pilot was not continued after nineteen ninety-nine, just due to the steep costs to the owner and city. In terms of sidewalk maintenance and repair, under Eugene City Code, property owners are responsible for all types of maintenance, and that includes keeping sidewalks clear of snow and ice and leaves and vegetation, as well as repairing them when they are damaged. When a repair is needed, property owners can hire the city or a contractor to complete those. And I want to emphasize that this is a very common policy throughout the United States, throughout Oregon. But a lot of people are surprised to learn about the role of property owners, especially when it comes to repair. I think Katie's going to next walk through some of our, some of the current things we're doing around sidewalks and some new initiatives.
Jody. And good morning. Like Jody mentioned, I'm Katie Marwitz. I'm a principal civil engineer for Public Works Engineering. And like she mentioned, I'm going to walk you through a couple of our current programs, ways we're working to address sidewalks currently. The important piece is, these are things we're doing within our current policies and framework. The city has several programs to help support the construction and repair of sidewalks. So our Public Works Maintenance Division manages the city sidewalk inspection program. And that program works with property owners on the notification and mitigation of potential hazards. So you'll see from the graph, overall, the number of complaints, and we receive those through a request for service, those have continued to go up on a year-by-year basis. So our city sidewalk inspector responds to those requests for services and provides outreach to property owners and works with them really closely on their options to mitigate and repair sidewalk defects. So looking backwards, there was for a little while a backlog in repair agreements in that program during the pandemic, but that has since been resolved. And as the crew size has increased, the number of repairs have increased. And in twenty twenty-four, there were twenty-three repairs that totaled just over seven thousand square feet of sidewalk replaced or repaired by city crews. And there's already planned forty-eight of those repairs for this year in twenty twenty-five. It is important to note that as we address more sidewalk repair, our urban forestry staff has, is increasingly involved, and they provide staff time and resources. Another current way that we're working to address sidewalk needs right now is through capital projects. So the Public Works Engineering Transportation Team and Capital Project Team, we work to prioritize, seek funding for and build new sidewalks to fill gaps in the pedestrian network. So one of the ways this work is supported is through the voter-approved twenty twenty-two street bond measure. And that provided for five million dollars for walking projects over the life of that bond. And then we also use safe routes to school grants or other similar grants to build new sidewalks in high-priority areas like near schools. And these are just a couple of photos of projects, project infill projects that have happened over the last couple of years. So on the left, you'll see that's Fifteenth Avenue near Caesar Chavez Elementary. And then up north to North Danabo. And that's, those are the pictures in the center on the right that, that are near Danabo Elementary. So looking ahead to this year in twenty twenty-five, we'll also be constructing sidewalk infill along Bertelson Road, as well as near the intersection of Prairie Road and Highway ninety-nine, as it connects to Empire Park Drive. Next, I'm going to share three, three recent initiatives that we're undertaking. And these options for moving forward were identified in the memo that Jody referenced that we can still do within our current policy framework. And these options also start to address the feedback that we're hearing from the community in the recent years. One of the first pieces we're tackling in this really complicated issue is public messaging. And so that's really how are we sharing information? And how is the, how can the public get more information about sidewalks? We've been hearing from the public that the reporting process is challenging for some to navigate online, and that the responsibility for sidewalk infill and repair is not really widely understood. So we've launched a new website about sidewalk planning, where the intent is people will be able to track upcoming sidewalk projects. And then it's our intention to continue to add to that website, to add references and links to other places around the organization that have around the organization that have relevant information. We're also working with internal staff at Public Works Maintenance to update their repair pages as well. Our Public Works Information Officer has helped provide program details to the media for several recent articles, which are great. And then, as Jody mentioned, we are working closely with community groups such as the Active Transportation Committee and CHERBS to keep them up to date. The second of the newer initiatives I want to share is a new sidewalk grinding pilot program that's taken on by our partners at Public Works Maintenance. Grinding is a really cost-effective way to remove trip hazards that can be from tree roots, that can be from just the ground contracting and expanding. And by performing grinding, you really can extend the life of a sidewalk or a piece of multi-use path. So the pilot started with the inspection of sidewalk adjacent to 13 city-owned parks, and 247 grinds were completed last year. And now, public works staff is evaluating the data from the work that they did to help determine kind of average cost per sidewalk, average cost per grind, to help inform future funding proposals. And the third of the newer initiatives to share is a sidewalk repair pilot program that we're starting this year within our capital project team. So starting with the projects that were listed on the 2022 bond measure, so those projects are starting this year, we're offering property owners the option to repair their sidewalks as part of the capital project. So this pilot potentially lowers the total cost of repair for an individual property owner. It includes efficiencies of streamlined permitting and urban forestry coordination. So we started this, we sent out letters to property owners along three projects, that's actually six streets. And so far, I've received over 30 calls from people who are interested and wanting to know more about what the next steps are.
Thanks, Katie. Next, I'm going to share a few updates on some of the other options for moving forward that we introduced in, were introduced in Jennifer's memo last fall. So the next several options are ways for the city to take more responsibility or action around sidewalk repair. And these would come with the need for either additional resources or potentially code or policy updates. So we aren't really looking for any type of decision from council today. We just want to present these as food for thought, especially in the context of as we look ahead to financial future and as we're starting to think more in detail about future city revenues and expenses. Also, as a reminder, Eugene sidewalk policies are not unique. So that also gives us the opportunity to look to other cities and communities outside of Eugene to see what they're doing about this common challenge. So we'll be sharing some options as well as looking at community examples. So first, first of all, we've been meeting regularly with, with internal teams across Public Works, talking about what it would take to sort of scale up our existing sidewalk repair programs, which are led by Public Works Maintenance. What I've learned is that our sidewalk crews, our inspector, and urban foresters are kept really busy by this work. And so additional staff and funding would really be needed to support these teams if we want to scale up our current programs. Scaling up would allow us to potentially be more proactive or resume proactive inspection and repair, which is something I believe the city previously did, and we currently rely on complaints coming in to focus our efforts. But looking into this, the big takeaway is that really additional staff and resources would be needed. It's not just simply funds for the concrete, but it's, it's the holistic program. Next, I'm going to talk about a couple of ways of expanding financial assistance. So these are examples of ways that cities can help provide more financial options to make sidewalk repair more feasible for property owners. In Eugene, we currently have two types of assistance. So we have a small subsidy available today for low-income households who are hiring the city to do repairs. And we also have within our city code, the allowable for deferral or modification of those, of payments for certain homeowners who meet both age and income criteria. But this has historically been used more for local improvement, district projects isn't really in use today. So how are other cities approaching this? In Denver, which I'm going to talk about on another slide, they've just launched a new sidewalk fee. And as part of that, they have an instant rebate for low-income households. So anyone who's already participating in their low-income solid waste rebate program is also instantly qualified for a rebate on their annual sidewalk fee. And then Pittsburgh, I have a map shown here from them. They've been running a pilot program for the last several years out of Public Works, where a sliding scale subsidy is being offered to property owners based on their income. So the lowest-income households pay only 25% of the cost of repair. They're also piloting offering all types of property owner a five-year interest-free payment option. And they're starting with sort of their high-priority sidewalk areas with this program, which are shown in the darker red. Another way that cities are providing financial assistance is through, when there's a city-owned tree involved. So a lot of, a lot of sidewalk repairs are needed because of the interaction between a street tree or a homeowner's tree and the sidewalk itself. So we currently cover all, the whole cost of tree care during a sidewalk repair. And that's regardless of whether the repair is being completed by our crews or a private contractor. What we found in our research is that some cities like San Francisco are also covering the entire cost of sidewalk repair that results from street tree-related damage. In San Francisco, they've also gone so far as to update their sidewalk policies. So the city is responsible for that maintenance rather than property owners. In other cities here in Oregon, the policy framework hasn't changed, but they are offering some cost savings or alleviation through a grant in Oregon City or like a 50-50 cost share in Sherwood, Oregon. Next, we're going to talk a little bit about point-of-sale programs. This is a promising concept where property owners are required to repair sidewalks at the time of sale. And this is kind of assuming that people, that's a time when people tend to have a little bit more cash on hand. And we found some, some exciting articles about this, but we're, in our research, unfortunately, it's coming up short. We're not finding a lot of examples of cities adopting this concept, and it's kind of leading to some questions about why more cities aren't doing this. So this research is still sort of underway on our half. But we did find, so Pasadena, California has this requirement as part of their code. They require repairs to the sidewalk to be enacted when a property is sold or when certain level of investment or remodeling is done up to over $20,000. At that point, they also require repair. And lastly, we looked into how other cities are funding all of these programs and, and the repair or building out of their sidewalk networks and kind of some of the unique revenue sources that they're looking at. So one thing to note, I get asked a lot, is, is there a grant out there that we can apply for that would help us cover the cost of sidewalk repair in our community? But the truth is, there really aren't a lot of grants out there for maintenance activities, and that's true for a lot of our transportation assets. So what we're seeing cities do is generate that revenue at the local level, typically through bonds or levies and through fees. So I'll talk about both briefly today. A few examples of cities using transportation bonds to cover sidewalk repair. And those are, the bonds are paid for by property owners in those communities. For example, in Seattle, the 2015 levy to Move Seattle funded 250 blocks of sidewalk repair and 250 blocks of infill over the last 10 years, and that bond has just been renewed recently. In Kansas City and Austin, Texas, they both, both of these cities actually changed their policy framework to have the city take on responsibility for sidewalk repair and not property owners. And coupled with that change, they supported this with a transportation bond to, to cover that new responsibility for the city. The second example here are sidewalk fees, and this is a way that we're seeing cities turn to for kind of a consistent source of revenue, where they have either a set monthly or annual fee to pay for sidewalk repair and sometimes sidewalk infill. So in Ithaca, New York, and now earlier this year, Denver, just started their fee. An annual fee is charged to property owners, and those funds are used to fund both repair and infill throughout the city. In Corvallis, a monthly fee is added to the city-owned public utility bill, and those funds are solely used for funding their sidewalk repairs. In Corvallis, what they do is divide the city into districts and inspect and repair one per year on a rotating basis using these revenues. And in Ithaca, they similarly have districts, but they're using funds each year to do priorities in, in one of five, in each of the five districts. Great. So lastly, it's why I thank you all for your time. We've highlighted a lot of things today. We're really excited to share these updates about our new pilot programs and some of these ideas for moving forward. We're open to providing any kind of updates on, on how things are going or doing any additional research into the things that might have interested you today. So with that, really appreciate the energy on this subject from our community members, staff and leaders. And we'll, yeah, thank you. We'll move on to discussion and questions.
Thank you, Steph. Thank you, Jody and Katie, for that presentation. Very busy desktop. Lots of work underway. I said to someone the other day that I bet we had close to 1,000 miles, 1,000 miles of sidewalks. To hear it's over 700 is really fascinating, just for the city of Eugene, for us to understand the scale that we're looking at here. Counselor Clark, I believe, was first in the queue, though he's changed places with Counselors Alenka. So could one of you clarify who, who was first?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't know. I, I couldn't see whether Alan beat me in or not, but I-
Mike was first.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks. I appreciate the presentation. Thank you very much. And I also appreciate thinking outside the box with the pilot programs to try and make it less expensive as roadwork gets done in an area. I think that's pretty smart. My ward, like at least a couple others, if not many, has considerable gaps in the network. And that's the subject of my first set of questions. And I don't know which staff member to address the question to. But my first question is, is there a state statute or a city policy that requires a sidewalk on a street where it doesn't exist? And for full disclosure, there, there are no sidewalks on either side of the street I live on, my house. Is that required in some way?
I'll go ahead and start, and then Jody or somebody else can chime in. You know, looking at our new street designs, the existing street design standards, and then standards that we're working on updating, we are going to have classifications of roadways that do not, that are like a curb list that don't have sidewalk on any street. But as far as like the specific code reference, we'd have to look into that and get back to you.
Is that an ADA issue?
I think it's, I think the ADA is really complicated, but I do think that we have examples of what we typically call unimproved streets or curbless streets around town, where we're still able to provide access, and we're doing different treatments at intersections. So I think it just looks different, but again, I'd have to reflect back on the actual code reference to get back to you, because I don't know, I don't know that answer.
I think of it in a couple of settings. For example, the street that I happen to live on is, is a, is an improved to a city standard, except that there are not sidewalks because it was of the year that it was built. But there are a number of streets in my ward that are not built to city standards. There are certainly in River Road and Santa Clara, a number of streets that are still county roads that aren't built to a city standard that don't include sidewalks. So I, I suspect that as we're bringing in more and more county roads annexing them, annexing them in, we're increasing that financial burden, much less even get down the, the question of local improvement, or I mean, excuse me, local access roads. Is, is that something you have scoped out? In, in Public Works, how much it would cost to complete the sidewalk network on roads that we either have in our system as, as unimproved to a city standard or as potentially in the future?
So I'm going to jump in here. Jennifer Willer, I'm the city engineer. And just to kind of jump back a little bit on your last question. So there are a couple of code provisions, both in Chapter Nine and in Chapter Seven, that talk about sidewalk requirements. And I think that Jody's presentation talked about that that code has evolved over time. So that's why you see some of the older developments where they didn't build sidewalk or we have gaps in the system because that, we don't, the code has changed over time. But right now, it talks about that sidewalk is required to be built during development activities. But then there's sections of the code that talk about the timing and who does that. And so that's why you'll see a lot of developments where maybe the public infrastructure is built, but the sidewalk's not until after the house is built, and then they come back in and they put the sidewalk in. And, and, but yeah, the current code does require a sidewalk to be placed.
And I'm asking a very specific, I apologize.
Right.
So, for example, on my street, would a homeowner have an option not to have a sidewalk put in in front of their house if they chose not to?
We don't, we don't really have a mechanism of when people have developed under an older code and not built the sidewalk to come back in and make them build the sidewalk. And that's where Jody talked about some of the more creative thinking of grants and different programs to do some sidewalk infill, recognizing it is this property owner's responsibility. And the city has done things like form LIDs and make property owners pay for those. But we also recognize that LIDs can be pretty unaffordable for people and, and messy. And so we are trying to figure out some other ways to try to afford doing these sidewalks. To get to your next question about unimproved streets and LARs, we have not gone that next step of identifying the cost to fully improve every one of those streets, including sidewalks.
Yeah, I bet.
I mean, we, we've been talking about, I know I've been talking with you about this for a long time, and it's, it's really complicated looking at, but we do evaluate each street as we look at it, as it comes up in various conversations, whether it's with county or neighborhoods that want to pursue the LAR or their unimproved or county road becoming a city street.
Okay. I'm not sure you answered my initial question, which was interesting, because I actually have been asked this. If you live on a street like mine that's improved to a city standard, but the homes were built long before there was any kind of issue, can the city require that a sidewalk be built in, on the property?
I think that where there, and again, I'd have to look into this, but I think what will happen is if they come in for particular building permits, that they may get required at that point. But just in general, the city's not going to come out and say, hey, you all need to build a sidewalk here, unless councilor could choose to form an LID and build sidewalks.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, thanks. I, I understand the rationale for homeowners being responsible for their sidewalks, and for that matter, having urban streets. And the rationale is that when their house was developed and the developer built the sidewalks, the builder included that in the price of the house. And if it didn't, then it's not, the rationale is that it's not fair to have everybody else pay for the sidewalk in front of your house when you paid for yours. It's, it's, it's a fairness issue. And especially if you get paid through, through property taxes or a tax dollar. So it's a subsidy. And I, and I get where, where that, so I get where, so how that applies to new sidewalks. Well, problem is that we have to repair them and they're expensive. And 700 miles of sidewalk, that's from here to Denver. That's how far 700 miles is. That's a lot of sidewalks. So, and they have to be repaired. So if, if the city of Eugene was responsible for all of that, we couldn't afford it. That's why we, the adjacent property owners are responsible for it. Again, repairs are expensive. I mean, the average in the AIS was $4,000 and news, $6,000 to $10,000. So I get it. I, I, but there are certain places where it makes sense for us to do that, like safe routes to schools for our schoolchildren to walk, safety, other kinds of safety concerns. Or, and then as it relates to climate change, if we want to get people out of their cars and we need to make it safe and convenient for them to walk, that means we need good sidewalks and a good sidewalk network. And that's why when we put it into the bonds, it's- And that's why when we put it into the bonds, it's steadily increased. I remember the first bond that we did, I put it, I I asked to double the amount of of uh, for alternative modes, including sidewalks, pedestrian. Um, and then in the next one, we doubled that. Now, now it's a significant percentage of it. Um, and we have five million dollars going just to sidewalk uh, uh, in the current bond. So I like, I like some of the stuff that we're doing. I like the grinding project. I like the the uh, repair pilot project. Uh, I like the Pittsburgh's idea of uh, income uh, uh, assistance upon on it, maybe a zero interest loan over five years or something like that. I I, I'm interested in the cost share for tree damage, um, although people benefit from the trees. Um, and uh, I think one of the most interesting ideas, the point of sale, when when the house is sold, you got to make sure your your sidewalks are up to snuff uh, or put them in for that matter. So I'm interested in that as well. Um, problem is, where do we get the money? What is, what's the funds? And and maybe we can have that be part of the budget stabilization, one of the many needs the city has, put that onto that list.
Sounds like heating.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with Counselor Zelenka's um, observation that this would need to rise uh, higher in the um, in the the ranking of uh, of community needs uh, when it comes to stabilization questions. Uh, I am curious about the point of sale uh, piece that Pasadena has has grappled with. Um, and I wondered, there was a a on the slide. And and first of all, thank you, Jody and Katie, uh, for the for the presentation. Um, on the, on on your slide, I believe it was Jody's slide, it asks the question, um, why aren't more communities moving forward with the point of sale piece? Um, I, could you expand on on that, Jody, please?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Um, I think what we wanted to do with our research was find out if this is a feasible option in Eugene and in Oregon. So we were hoping to uncover um, some other local examples of places where this, where this policy is in place. Um, all the examples we have are Canadian or Californian cities today, so um, we're kind of just doing some more research around that and happy to keep keep looking into that to see whether there's any reason why or why this couldn't be applied here.
Yeah, great. Um, you know, I I I I want to get creative uh, with how we raise revenue to put toward our sidewalks. I don't know that, you know, what's on the table, what's not. I would be open to looking at everything from Airbnb fees to rounding up a tip jar style, you know, opportunity when folks do their their local taxes. Maybe there's an opportunity to uh, round up to keep our sidewalks safe. Um, I do recognize that there's, uh, I believe you put it, uh, a challenge, I think Katie put it, uh, there's a challenge to navigating online. And I would submit that the request for service model may also while laudable, it may not be the most equitable model in that the folks who have access and the time and the tools to make those requests um, aren't working class folks who um, who either might not have access to the internet or 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 might be living life and 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 so busy not not to make those um, not not to make those requests for service. Do you, when you look at a heat map of where the requests for service come from, is my observation an accurate one?
We might need to follow up. That's a really interesting question in terms of the the heat map of that. We, I think we'll have to follow up on that unless Eric can speak to that more specifically. Sounds like we'll need to follow up.
Okay, that that's great. Uh, uh, I I I would appreciate that that follow up. I think that would be an informative uh, informative piece. Um, okay, uh, I'll I'll pause there and 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 just recognize that uh, there's a need for more repair, a need for more upkeep. Maybe there's a shared responsibility between homeowners and and the municipality. Maybe there's a little bit we can take from from each. Maybe there's a way we can further explore the Pasadena model. Um, and maybe there's uh, an opportunity to explore the equitable approach to this request for service model uh, online. Uh, I don't know. I I appreciate the 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 willingness to to make it more user friendly. Um, but I think we need to even broaden it beyond that. Um, and I and I don't know what that looks like, so I'm eager to 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 learn more, and I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate council leaning in uh, with kind of our shared values here of making our sidewalks more safe, more accessible. Appreciate it.
Counselor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jody and Katie, for the presentation. This is something I think is important that we look into. Um, first of all, I agree with Counselors Alenka. I think this should be added into our budget shortfall stabilization discussions we're going to be having. Um, I certainly understand the model of making it the property owner's responsibility, but in practice and practical application, it obviously, it's it's not working. Uh, I'm also uh, have thought for some time uh, along the lines of Counselor Keating of a point of sale or title transfer um, that we we collect the money then. In fact, I'd really like to see if we if we end up going that route, maybe developing a fund that could be funded by one of these other mechanisms to develop pot of money where we could go in and fix the property now and then collect the cost of fixing the sidewalk at the point of sale, just so it gets done earlier. People are getting hurt on our sidewalks. I know it's a um, a mobility issue for uh, people who are in um, chairs. Uh, in fact, I I met with a uh, a former colleague of mine from the dispatch center um, recently. Uh, he's he's part of Curbs and Wheels and um, was just kind of sharing some of um, the difficulties that that they have, uh, you know, with with some mobility challenges to begin with. Uh, and he also brought uh, another member, I believe, from Curbs and part of this discussion in trying to find um, realistic ways of of addressing the problem. Um, and also I want to add, I'm I'm concerned about our lower income people um, that are just barely getting by. And maybe the how their house is the only asset that they have, uh, real asset. And they aren't going to be able to afford to make these repairs. So we we need to come up with more of a an approach that that takes all these different considerations into um, respect here as we as we move this forward. But I certainly, um, I certainly think it's past time that we start finding uh, a way to address this problem. Not only getting us back up to speed like we've been doing with our streets and street repairs on the street bond, but also um, takes us into the future of of how do we we build and maintain. Like all of us, I have streets in my ward that are unimproved without sidewalks. Some of them are on major walking routes to schools. Uh, Warren Drive, for example, has uh, unimproved, no sidewalks on steep grades with a lot of curves, and there's kids that are walking back and forth. And then also the north part of my ward, um, south of Royal have some unimproved streets as well. Thank you.
Counselor Koshinsky.
Thank you, and thank you, staff, for the presentation and the work that you've been doing on this topic. I agree. It's very important thing that we should be uh, uh, putting some focus on, given the way that it impacts a lot of our goals surrounding um, both uh, people being able to get around the community and access and uh, uh, modes of transportation that being being accessible. I had a couple of questions. Um, for the pilot that you're doing with um, uh, offering to fix deficient sidewalks as part of a larger street repair bond, is that um, is there low income assistance available for a property owner who is found to have a sidewalk that's deficient as part of that inspection, who wants to fix it at that lower cost? Is there, is there a tool available resource, or are they, it's like, if you don't have two thousand dollars right now, you're out of luck?
No, there is. Uh, we do have a a low income subsidy piece for that, and Jody spoke just a little bit of that. We have a fund that's set aside where that's an option. It has not been widely used in the past, but it's it's available if that's the scenario for somebody interested in taking advantage of that.
Okay, um, and that's not the the particular fund that where age is a requirement?
It, uh, maybe Jody can speak to it a little bit more. I think at this point it is one that it's age, it's age and income. Jody, can you
Oh, um,
help finish that?
The the current subsidy that is offered for people who work with, who sign repair agreement with the city is not age restricted. It's it's for, it's based on like a means tested income. So people show their out, their proof of eligibility by showing that they're part of like SNAP or WIC or a different type of pre-tested program. So we're not reviewing their income directly, but through that, and there's no age restriction in in those ones.
Okay.
Thank you for correcting that, Jody.
And the one that has the age restriction is not particularly currently used, is that right?
That's correct. That one's tied to Eugene City Code in in chapter seven, and so that one is has like um, explicit age and income requirements to be qualified for like deferral or modification of payments is kind of.
Okay, yeah, because one of the things that I am, I'm thinking is that if we're going to have deferral and modification of payments, I feel like an age restriction is a, is an odd thing to have as part of that. Um, I understand that the the logic would be to assist seniors with being able to repair their sidewalks, but if you can't afford to fix the sidewalk, that's going to impact all of your neighbors regardless of their age. And, you know, folks who are under a certain age can need support to help fix those sidewalks. So, you know, as we're looking at whatever changes we want to make, not putting a barrier in place for folks who may not be able to afford it to be able to make that improvement for, it's going to impact everyone in the neighborhood. And then I had another question. I noticed in the the memo, um, the number of investigations and then the number of notifications to property owners. Um, and it seemed like there were a lot more investigations than there were notices to property owners. Um, can you help me understand like why that is? Is they investigated and found the sidewalk was fine? Or what, kind of what was the reason for that difference?
Sure, the um, one of the, one of the data points that we found on those numbers is sometimes when we went out to investigate, we're able to move that to another group. For example, some of those requests for service ended up being like a vegetation code compliance type request, and so they didn't line up one to one with always being a request for service for a sidewalk defect. So that's where you're going to see the difference because they weren't all directly related.
Okay. Um, and so, but if you do go out and investigate and find a defect that would generate a notice to a property owner. All right. Thank you. Those were my questions.
Beth, I just have one quick question. Really appreciate this discussion and all the information being shared. It strikes me that our our pedestrian networks are the foundation of our entire transportation system. Every trip starts and ends as a pedestrian trip um, in in some way or or form, um, including our wheeled neighbors. And I'm just curious um, if we've had any engagement from our partners or talked with our partners in um, transit planning around the importance of these improvements, especially on corridors where we are seeking to um, increase the access that people have to reliable and frequent trans transit options.
Um, Rob, if you're available, do you want to talk about the first and last mile study? I think that that's what um, the mayor is getting at.
I could take that one too. I
Okay, thanks.
His little camera.
Thanks, Jody.
Um, we have, we actually do have a joint study coming up with LTD with the Lane Transit District that's going to be looking at every bus stop in the city of Eugene um, from like a data perspective and also doing a lot of outreach to understand what is the biking and walking access. And we're going to develop um, kind of a need, a list of needs and then a list of potential projects, and that that project also will result in some sort of quick build type um, interventions to address those. So that's going to be really comprehensive, and I believe we're um, soliciting sort of or consultant support for that this fall, so that should be pretty soon. Um, and then LTD also has their own um, ADA access study, so they're doing a review of bus stops district wide to understand the um, accessibility and how how well they meet the Americans with Disabilities Act.
That is a great update. I knew a little bit about one of those projects is a really terrific example of how our city is working with its partners to advance um, equity of access and accessibility and be more age friendly as we're planning and and planning in a coordinated way. Very much appreciated. We'll be interested, and it'll be interesting. That'll be a fascinating study. When it's all wrapped up, it'll tell us a lot about where our opportunities are. Um, seeing no other questions from council, no other discussion. Um, I will just say thank you again for that presentation, and that concludes our agenda for today. So I will now close the June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five city council work session, and we are adjourned. Have a good day.